This is the divide of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under and around, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Happy 21st of December and the ground is not white.
Ah, no.
Shortest state of the year.
That's right, that's right. We had the agenda before, it's our addition to the practice. It's not entertaining, let's just include the agenda.
I'll move.
Most of my groups second by more, conclude the agenda as printed, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion Jerry. We have minutes from 12:14, in addition to the direction from the minutes.
I'll move that we adopt the act.
Second.
Welcome to you, Rick, second by Jerry, conclude the minutes as said, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion Jerry. Are there comments from the public who can't remember, not already on the agenda, or have other reasons to be here? All right, well move right into Jeff, Jeff, County Fair.
Well, of course, we're here.
All right.
We got the hot seat out there for Jeff here.
No, I'm good, right here.
We're here on behalf of the Humble County Fair. As you recall, we come to the meeting about this time every year to discuss a few things. We have a cover sheet here as you note in your packet. Their supervisors, the Humble County Agricultural Society, would like to request funding the same as last year for the Humble County Fair in an amount of $25,000. This amount is being requested by unanimous vote of the fair board. Many of our 16-member board participated at this year's state fair conference in December 13th to 15th in Des Moines, at which time we were able to finalize events for this year's fair. We continue to have a full board with new board member Kevin Cordray. In 2015, we completed rebuilding of the pulling track and secured Lucas Oil Pro-Pulling League for the third year in a row. We were able to bore under the track to provide new electric and sound wire to the infield as well as a new transformer for the carnival, next generation shows of Lone Tree Iowa. We eliminated the overhead wires over the track, which will be safer for participants in events as well as the general public, and at the same time, we trench to new speaker wire to the north end of the grounds and removed old overhead speaker wire, which was failing, as well as completed all the normal repairs on the grounds as needed. In 2016, we will upgrade our sound in the infield and replace speakers at the north end. We will also continue, use, uh, be continuing our systematic upgrade of our electrical system on the grounds, and the board is also looking into replacing the old red barn, this is at the north end of the fairgrounds, horse barn. Red barn with another building which will allow for more room for horses. We even closed a copy of our latest draft of the events of the 2016 Humble County Fair, contact information, the current fair board, and the economic impact of county fairs from the State Association, as well as our mission statement. The fair board would like to thank you for your continued support of the Humble County Fair. We believe keeping the community and youth involvement now will allow continued success for our fair in the future.
I have to say, I think you have one of the county fairs around the area.
We like to think so.
You know, even though the forty can never pay livestock decreases, you seem to be moving in with something else to fill the void.
Uh huh, uh huh. Some of the fair livestock numbers have gone up, you know, it varies, but, uh...
Well, their chicken thing hurt last year a little bit for the smaller projects.
It did, it did.
Took away from it a little bit.
State-wise, yeah. Yep, yep, and hopefully we won't have that issue, certainly not in the near term, or if ever ideally, again. And, uh, but aside of that, why, uh, our participation, um...
I guess what I like the most, when I look down at your list of board members, and I was on this board for about three or four years, and you have a nice mix of people that have been there a lot, and you always continue to get new people, and when you see some of the new names, you know, I'd say, hey, yeah, that's a good guy. So you're able to recruit and maintain, because this is a big job. You take the number hours, man-hours that go into running this, it isn't just about what we donate or what you keep up, there's a lot of man-hours to do this, so you need young people.
I couldn't have said it better, Jerry. The Humble County Fair doesn't just drop out of the sky.
No, it does.
Yeah, it's just not a week-long deal.
And the fact that we've had kids in four ages who've been through that road, and how much time that takes, I mean, the involvement of the parents is important, but it also takes somebody to be there every day to open those gates.
Yes, yes, indeed.
And it's all volunteer work?
It is volunteer, yeah.
And a lot of these guys, I look at and I know they're volunteering equipment.
You have to want to do this.
Right.
Much like this board here, you have to want to be here.
Right. But you do have, you always keep your townships full, and that's hard to do in this day and age, it seems like.
Uh huh.
So I commend you for that.
You do provide a lot of services to the community and the county outside of what we do at the fair, too. A lot of utilities get utilized by you.
Oh, oh, of course, yeah. Our rentals, um, we, we keep our rental calendar, it's a little bit seasonal sometimes, but it's generally filled, and, um, of course, we let our portable stage go to like the, uh, the museum or, um, downtown sounds and this kind of thing, and so it, it kind of gets around. I think Gilmore City uses it once a year, too, and, um, yeah.
Well, I think since you acquired the swimming pool, that's opened up some more parking, that's made, that's been a big improvement from what I see.
Parking, yeah. You know, back in the, back in the days, as you might well recall, parking was...
Never where you could.
Yeah, that, that was a hodgepodge.
A lot smoother.
But when we have the pool property parked as tight, and we, we have the cert team when we can get them to park cars. The first year we had them, uh, they were able to get the cars parked in a decent organized fashion.
Kind of train you how to do it, yeah.
Yeah, but you know what, the next year, we couldn't get the cert team. But I made a little tour through that parking area, the old pool property, and...
People picked up on it.
Yeah, it's just like, yeah, we get it now.
Yeah. Well, and when I see your requests, what you're planning on doing, you know, it's, it's one of those deals, when you say electrical upgrades, it's unbelievable what that costs, but it's not something you're going to visually see, but it probably is well, long overdue, because a lot of that...
Exactly.
...needed some improvement.
Exactly, and, uh, one of the statements we've made in the past is, like, for 2015, we buried a lot of money.
Right.
You look at a, a bill and you think, well, gee, I don't see anything different. Yeah, well, guess what, it's all underground.
Right.
And...
And that's a big improvement long-term.
It is, it is, and, uh, by doing...
Last year, that was over $30,000.
Yeah, I'm sure it was.
You know, so you're looking at the good usage, permanent upgrades, and something that, a lot of those wires overhead were starting to fail because of the sun, and now they're all underground, but those lasted 30 years, so this, this improvement should be more than our lifetime, is what we're thinking, so we think we're doing real good things.
It's a, it's a good way to bulletproof things is when, when we have it underground this way. Plus, it eliminates, well, it, it appreciates to the safety side, it eliminates to the clutter side, but, you know, the, the benefits are just left and right, the whole way.
Well, I'm sure you told us about some of your debt, I think you're getting both to be out of debt.
We are out of debt.
Long range wise, any targets on replacing your grandstands or part of the grandstands? What's, what's the blueprint there?
Uh, the grandstand project hasn't been dropped, it never will be. It's always in, at least in, in mind.
Uh huh.
Uh, financing is the highest priority there, as you can well imagine. Um, yeah, it'd be wonderful to have a new grandstand someday, uh, but having it all won't mean having it all at once. It would have to be most likely a phase in. Um, but as, as well you know on this board, there's always somewhere for the money to go. Um, that's a big ticket.
Well, you know, maybe someday somebody would leave a donation that would get, jumpstart a phase of it or something, you know, sometimes you try to get it in motion, and there's no need to approach it to the money, because you can't, you can't borrow when you don't have the money.
Right, right. That'd be the worst...
It's a big project.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't want to put ourselves in a, in a tight position and be overextended and then not be able to service the debt.
Right.
This kind of thing, so, um...
Well, normally, we should request into a big pile here, and we start working on budgets, and once a year, we'll sure take that into consideration.
Uh huh. But a- as we recall in our board, uh, that the Humble County Board Supervisors was looking to level the allotment to the fair at 25,000, and that's part of the reason we, we put in this 25,000, too, on the cover letter, but, uh...
You see our engineers here, did we have some exchange of equipment last year, too? Did Paul, you came down and did some work for them, and...
Oh, yes, we, uh, we took the Humble County Road Compactor on its maiden run. Very much appreciated.
Worked real well, didn't it, when you get a brand-new one for change?
Boy, I'll say, I, the secondary roads really stepped up and did us a great...
In order to just for you.
Yeah. Great, it was...
See, we were thinking about it, right?
I think the paint was still tacky.
It was on the inside.
You probably...
On the inside of ours, I, I was at the shop, and it was receiving brand-new, uh, transport yellow paint, and I thought, man, this is sweet.
Well, we were a long overdue for one, too, ours has got pretty worn out, too, so...
Yeah.
Nice that you can use it.
The new one, the way it's designed, will last a lot longer than the old spoke wheel one.
But for you to go buy a $25,000, you have to use it, or we could do, didn't make sense.
Well, it's like owning a combine.
Doesn't make sense.
That's bad enough.
That would make it do a lot.
Right, right. We do have, we do have a compactor down there, but it takes, for our tractor pull, it takes two, you have one at each end, and you kind of know that drill, but, um, but you bet.
Well, we thank you for bringing to our attention and you do a good job, you will certainly thank us, you're thoughtful.
Well, very good. Are there any more questions? I, this is as far as I, if there's any more questions, I would be glad to entertain any... No, this is all I had for now. Um, thank you for your time and for your continued support.
Thanks, guys.
Keep the show going.
Thank you.
Kathy, would you like to come up to the hot seat? For all the good news you've got, right?
I, I just scheduled to talk to the board this morning. Um, last week, we received resignation for our full-time case manager. Um, she's been with us for quite a while, so we will sure miss her. She's, um, made a decision to go to work for one of the managed care companies that Medicaid has contracted with, um, for the state of Iowa, so she'll be taking on a position with them, and I've had contact with our regional director, Bob Lincoln, just in regard to some planning, and he is recommending that we, um, post and then advertise to re, um, to rehire for this position, and so I, I, at this juncture, agree with that, because we really still aren't clear, you know, um, how things will come out and with the workload. I mean, we haven't diminished our workload at all, so, um, I don't know that it would be possible or practical to try to, to manage that with, we just have one lawyer's now 30-hour-a-week position, um...
Oh, this is Lisa, that's Lisa.
This is Lisa Deesburg, correct, yeah.
And effective January?
Uh, effective January 1st is her last day of employment with Humble County.
Kathy, Kathy, come up, we visited a little bit last week, and I think this is the best direction for now. It, it doesn't mean necessarily that we'll get candidates that are, you know, looking for this position, but at least we can find out what's out there. I mean, with all these changes in healthcare, there's a lot of good people are looking to the MCOs, you know, and take a job. Now, will she be on the road with her position much, or do you know?
I really, I really don't know, and I don't know that they know, you know, they're all...
They're not sure either, but with all the changes coming, there's a lot of mixing up going on and stuff, but...
Do you see whether Maggie Garrett dropped out now, or didn't throw down, instead of four, we're looking at three.
Is it, is it the one that had trouble in another state? I can't figure it out.
I don't, I don't know that I've heard that that's been official, but I, you can't, there are changes every day, but it's, it's difficult to keep up with, and I believe it was middle of last week, um, they've now extended, um, the implementation of March 1st, so now we're another two months beyond what we, you know, had...
Oh, now we'll probably do that again.
Have anticipated happening, so, and we, you know, we will also, now that we are, especially with the, um, targeted case management that we do, will look, um, you know, we are part of the county social services integrated care management, so we will look to, you know, the other counties who partner with us on that, to, you know, manage the, um, coverage and the, and the interim, just to...
And I guess the main thing is, you, you'll find ways to cover until we figure out where we're at, if we can get somebody else.
And we'll do the best we can.
I knew you would. I'm not sure I'd be much help to you.
So you're talking posting for the job ASAP, or after the first year?
Well, we'll pro, we'll post internally, um, and I believe we keep that for two weeks, and then we'll advertise if there's no, no interest internally, so then that would, you know, if, if we have no interest from within, and when I say within, that would include any of our county social services partners, not just, not just Humble County, but any of our, right, any of our CSS partners, um, would have someone that has an interest, and we would look to advertise externally at that point.
How do we know we can't get a affirmation with the flex, you know, flex going on, you know, whether that's a long-term job search or a job...
Right, I...
Nobody may fly.
I, I guess I, I will be back to the board and probably come, come with some other options, and, yeah, see what direction to go from there, so...
Want to read that letter of resignation, so we can vote on it?
Oh, there you go.
Yeah. Um, December 14th, 2015, to whom it may concern, I regret to inform you that I am resigning my position with Humble County as case manager. I have accepted another position in my last day of employment only January 1st, 2016. I have enjoyed my work at Humble County for the past 11 years, and I feel that this change is in the best interest of my future and my family's future. Sincerely, Lisa Deesburg.
You should let me read that for you. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, we need a motion to accept the resignation.
That being said, I will accept the resignation with regret and thank her for her years of service, I know she is a very good person to our county.
So, okay.
I want you in a second to accept the resignation, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion Jerry.
Thanks, Kathy.
Kathy, thank you very much.
Have a good Christmas.
Kathy.
Okay, Paul Dickinson, you're the last here, Tom. After three minutes, we're working on it.
Wow.
Just keep us on schedule.
Finding's very easy, we have approved, uh, plans and specifications for our three paving projects, our STP projects, parent 67, farm-to-market projects, parent 66 and 64. Uh, those projects, uh, more generally are paving, uh, the STP portion of this is from Highway 169 through State's Avenue. Uh, State's Avenue is at the corner on C-26, there where you turn and go north, uh, on, uh, and C-26 continues on to, into Hardy. That portion from the corner on into Hardy is part of an FM project, and, uh, that would also be included and tied with this. The third paving project with this would be, uh, P-59 from the Webster County line to C-48, uh, that little three-mile piece. These three projects are tied and recommended to be tied and planned to be tied, because we're trying to bid a concrete overlay for all projects. We have moved around, and, uh, and what we'll see next week is, uh, we'll propose to do some HMA, a block topping, a resurfacing in the summer of 2017 on other areas of the county, but these three were grouped because they're good candidates for, uh, for white topping, for concrete overlay. We have them to the board, this is our final turn-in for, for a March, uh, March 15th letting through the DOT. Uh, print, uh, projects, the FM projects from C-26 or State's to Hardy is programmed for about $460,000. Uh, P-59 from Webster County to C-48 is about $560,000, and, uh, the STP portion from Highway 169 to State's is about 1.33 million. That is, uh, includes, uh, a majority share is, uh, through Fed-Aid funding, that's our STP project. Uh, for those interested, uh, the STP project on the Foster Bridge includes, uh, removal and replacement of the concrete approaches on either end.
You have to help.
We've also included with that, through the bottom, uh, through where we normally have water over the road, we're paving both shoulders. We're widening the road in that area.
That would be good.
So that we, every time we lose a little more material when the water goes over the bridge, uh, excuse me, water goes over the road with, uh, with some, uh, scouring on the downhill side, and hopefully this will keep, keep us nice and wide at that point, and, and help, uh, safety and a long-term maintenance. So that's a few, few things are a little different than our normal run-of-the-mill projects here.
All right, it's a good, it's a good idea to lump them two projects together.
Well, we looked at all the paving in the near term, and, uh, we put our candidates' best bits of concrete overlays together, and, and some of these projects in the northern part of the county, Odison North, uh, that, uh, one-mile piece north of Bode, um...
Little piece by Laverne.
Uh, that local piece by Laverne has moved up the ladder, we're going to try to get that in, there's several pieces that we'll all look, and, and we'll have a chance. We're going to look at it next week as an amendment to our current year, and then obviously, when we get into budgeting, we can change the next year's current year, the F-17 around again, but, uh, it looks like, uh, the way funding is right now, that, uh, that's, uh, and if prices hold out, uh, that should work well. Um, one would like to believe that HMA is going to come down somewhere along the line with pricing improved, but so far, it's holding up pretty well.
So when you put these out, you don't put a time, they, they tell you when they would be able to do something?
Uh, this, this, when it goes through the DOT, they'll offer as a contract, we'll issue, uh, a late start date that fits everything going on in the state, they like to look at the whole thing, and, and something like this, they'll look at, uh, and make it as late in the year as possible with concrete, I would expect, in August or August 15th, late start. With that being said, um, with some of the country, companies interested in this, they might take this right out of the hop.
That's what I wondered.
The last time, um, Manats came in and was milling, what, the 12th of April?
Yeah, they did it early, because it was planting season, we had a few upset, upset people that couldn't get out of their cars, planters. So, uh, we're going to do much better about notifying people about it.
And what we did last year was, we notified them all in the middle of winter, all the landowners, we notified them all for pre-con, I, I mean, uh, and that's what we plan on notifying, too, but at some point, there's always something going on with a portion of the road that will be closed with white topping.
In the end, it all worked out, and I think nobody didn't want to return the road.
Yeah, but, you know, I happened to be out there, and I found out through the bank that, hey, my neighbor says, hey, did you know that they can't drive on your road for three days?
You should have got a letter.
Never, never got notified at all. And I, luckily, I got my vehicle out of my yard, I would have been walking for three days.
Until 21st of December, we could start milling today.
Um, so we just got to make sure we get it...
That's the holdup, that was the holdup last time. As a matter of fact, they were trying to move equipment in, and we couldn't have a pre-con until we had a contract in hand.
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me, until we had a contract in hand, and DOT faxed us, uh, signed contract the morning of our pre-con as they're moving equipment in. But, uh, they got most of the paving, and we had cure prior to planning a big chunk of this, uh, that time.
Paul, just to refresh, what were those dollar amounts, again, 416, 1.?
Uh, 1.33 million is the long stretch, so...
To Hardy, you know?
416, 560?
416, 560?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
No, no, excuse me, 600 is, uh, the, uh, Webster County to, uh, to, uh, I may have given you the wrong number.
Well, I didn't...
I better go through this again here, let's try this one more time, because I have in...
I'll listen better, too.
I have what we programmed, I gave you what we programmed...
You said Hardy first.
In blue, so don't let me lead to, uh, read the red numbers, it shouldn't be released today yet. C-26 to Hardy.
That's what you said first.
That is that FM piece from State's Avenue to Hardy, around the curve and then I end to Hardy.
Okay, the curve part, yeah.
That is programmed for 460,000.
All right, I got that.
With that, we're budding right up to the header, the west header on the railroad, we're trying to work with the railroad who wants to raise that intersection, and the co-op who's got two lines that they seldom use.
Right.
So we're trying to get all of this, if they can get done with what they want, then we can finish it with pavement, would be wonderful.
Right.
So we've contacted it.
Finish paving through that, or up to it?
Well, then we'll skip, we'll drop over it, and then we'll pave on into about the first side street, and we'll finish off the last 500 feet with HMA in town, we're going to mill and fill in town, and then, uh, the balance around the railroad, which we have to match, we'll use asphalt to match. But hopefully, the railroad, uh, we talked to Dave Gerlou, they're working on that, he looked at the tracks, and he said, yes, they'd like to raise them.
Any chance they'd look at a crossarm there? What would be the process on that? It just has to be their idea, because there's a, there's a lot of people have asked about because of that.
Flying spot.
It's a bad one.
Unfortunately, uh, crossarms are tried mostly to, uh, to, uh, history, accident history.
Okay, yeah.
And being...
Because they got that one outside of the bird, now I just happened to look up, I just come through there the other, yesterday, and I was, gee, they got a crossarm here, and that's wide open, but somebody had an accident there.
That was created by the motorcycles, remember that?
It was?
After a bait one year.
Okay.
Really.
I mean, it takes something.
That came through the railroad safety funds, not through the county or the state.
Well, anyway, I just, I thought they were doing updates, I didn't know if there's...
So, so there, we're planning and trying to fix a few of these things, the bridge out there in the end of that at farm-to-market project, we're not putting guardrails on it, we're putting on the plans that, uh, you know, in the life of the pavement, in the, somewhere soon, we'll be replacing that structure.
The north-south road stretch.
On State's Avenue, right through the dredge ditch, uh, we're going to pave right through that thing, we're going to try to raise the vertical somewhat, at some point, when we do replace it, we'll end up cutting a piece out and filling it, so the sag is gone somewhat, uh...
That's concrete through there, though, too.
It's, we're going to concrete right on through the bridge and through that structure and go on, uh, but, but we're not going to put guardrails on all four corners of that, there is none there now.
And then that under, pat, or that culvert underneath the road, or you don't think you'll put flares on, or you'll look at it?
Uh, we'll look at that at some point, again, that's to my...
I guess I'm more concerned about washing out, and, I, maybe it's never not that, it's just right to the edge, I...
Yeah, it's, that's all it is, and if it was extended, and if we could do, you know, this is one where, uh, generally, I'm not an add-to-the-existing guy, but the existing is pretty, is pretty good shape.
Well, that's a community last week, so that's what I wondered.
Um, because then alls you do is, uh, make a problem down the road, but, uh...
Yeah, okay.
Uh, it, it, uh, we looked at replacing it, but it's in, it's really not warranted now other than widening it, so we did not put that in. That would be a local-funded project, and that'd be down the road, something to talk about in five-year plans, but, uh...
Okay.
Um, maybe the short-term, uh, short-term solution is to add some four-by-four precasts on the end, strap them in, and...
I think it'd be worth looking at it, yeah.
No, we've looked at that, and we've had it on the sites for several years, but there are several fixes going on with these projects, uh, around the railroad tracks, at the bridge, on Foster Bridge, down in the bottom with paved shoulders. Uh, the cleanest project is probably, uh, P-59 from Webster County, which is programmed for 600,000, I hope that's what I said first.
560, I thought.
Okay, I won't...
That's what, I'm just, yeah.
I, uh, programmed is 600,000.
Okay.
I won't tell you what the 560 is right now.
We won't ask?
Yes.
P-59, okay.
And then the, uh, the Hardy portions programmed for 460, and then the 1.33 is the big piece, and that was...
You know, that'll correct a lot of little problems with Foster Bridge, that water going on the road, that bridge, uh...
K Road, we're coming up, two K Road from either side, and we're doing the intersection, but nothing on Main Line of K. So K Line, K Road will be open for the duration.
All right.
So traffic control there can shoot on through. We're not.
Yeah, you're not going to pave through there, so that's good. Otherwise, it'd be a nasty.
Now, it's similar to the dilemma north of you on what to do. Looking back, I wish we'd have done the intersection, but it would have been a traffic control purgatory.
Right, right.
But whenever you do it, it's going to be traffic control purgatory.
When you talk to the railroad on that, just ask them about it. Lights are, tell them that's a bad.
Well, you know, we get the railroad safety flash.
I know why it's a bad quarter because I about didn't get stopped one time with a tractor and sprayer, and that's, that's a pretty good scare when you're not paying attention and miss that.
And that's in the corporate limits of Hardy, by the way.
It probably is.
Okay, we need a motion to approve and second the effect of the overlay project as presented.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion carried, second by Rick to approve the plans, overlay plans, specifications as presented by Paul. Other discussions? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Oh, nay? Motion carried.
There'll be nine signatures. I'm just going to leave them here. You guys call me back when such time is appropriate. Have a good morning.
Thank you, Paul. Let's go to the third and final reading of the order of Route sixty-three. We read that, what was it? Hey, you read that fourth last week. Do we have any discussion or concern about it?
We have had a chance to review a concern, a letter or two, read through that. We talked to Dean about it this morning. He still favors it. I think we, as a board, probably still do because it's going to make sure on registration and liability insurance, and there's several people using it, using the system now, so I think it's okay.
Another county's around a certain.
I read it in the Humble paper. Was that pretty accurate, what the ordinance it has to say?
Yes. We tried to keep it simplified. Several that we looked at.
Really?
This was the cleanest.
That's what we take quality, they, I guess.
We added.
I hadn't seen it before.
Yeah, we added the liability, and we added some clauses that, on private trails and stuff to make sure to contact DNR or the Conservation Board, so they have, you know, separate, separate rules too, so.
I didn't have any phone calls or anything on any objections, so I'd make a motion to the third.
We have a motion by Bruce to approve work of sixty-three. Do we have a second?
Second the motion.
All those.
For, for clarification?
Yeah.
You're approving the third and final and adopting it, right? All in one motion, or do you want two separate?
All in one motion, I believe.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, waive the third wait reading and approve the option for resolution sixty-three. Other discussions to adjutant this resolution?
Okay, we didn't waive the third reading. We just had the third.
The half, the reading.
Yeah.
Where the final, that's correct.
The third final, yeah.
That's right, Peggy.
Any other discussion? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Oh, nay? Motion carried.
Is that being done, I think we need to do a drainage, drainage block, maintain the motion to do the drainage.
So move.
More? All those favors going drainage, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, nay? Motion carried. We are.
See, that's later.
Going pretty good, yeah.
You guys drain this one.
It's a good thing we got drainage, otherwise we would have been ice skating from whole county.
Is this a?
Yep, they're going to, they're going to.
Oh, Hardy.
Yeah, let's see.
Are they going to fix those approaches?
Yes, they're going to fix the approaches on that bridge.
Yeah, because they were bad.
Oh, yeah, they're terrible. And then from here, it turns and goes.
Yeah. Okay. They're putting it in skating down hard, it looks like.
If it ever gets cold enough to freeze ice.
Yeah.
It doesn't sound that way for a while. Twenty-degree weather to do it.
Yeah, I tell you. It's unusual, but I like it.
Oh, you.
I need to.
Ah, she does.
Yeah, with all the shorts.
We can read.
Talking wet rain.
Did you see mist coming down, Rick?
Just very light. The only slippery part was way Emmett County and a little bit into Palo Alto. Otherwise, there must be enough traffic or something. It wasn't bad.
We had better rub them.
Yeah, that must be it. What I'm handing out is an annexation report, and it's District Seven, Sub Three. So it's Sub Three of DD seven. There was a bunch of tiling done, and this, this is about four miles east of Bradgate. I'm going to give you a tiling map that was drawn or submitted that spurred this. This is from Section One of Avery.
Yes.
You bet. Let's see, all the yellow lines there, that's lateral tile that were installed, and that took that eighty acres to the southwest. And haven't been any arguments that we've come across as far as not doing this. In the annexation report, while we were doing this, we cleaned up the district also. That drawing that has some colored lines on it in the back, the, the blue lines represent quarter-quarters that have at least partial annexation. And if you'll see in the upper right-hand corner, that there's an eighty right here, that's that, where all the tiling was done, just east of that Armstead, eighty acres. That's north and south. That, that really prompted all of this being done. Don't remember the landowners now. It's probably on here. Davis.
Drew?
Yes, mhm. So, like I say, no argument there. They tiled it. They had the map that showed it going to the southwest, and this falls in an area where it's kind of between two districts, but this cleaned that up by getting that whole eighty into the district, so.
Good.
Yeah, just, this should get this then cleaned up, and I, next, we will be looking at classification on this, and we've got that with us today. Because anytime you annex, you have to classify the land that's being annexed, so we classified every one of these that were added and have a resulting report to give you later, so. Is there anybody here from District Two, seven? Don't think so. Pretty straightforward. I never know how many copies to write. I got extra copies, but better have, rather have a little extra paper to lose than not having for people, so.
Other discussion here on the annexation report? I need a motion to accept the annexation report?
So move.
By more?
Sorry.
To approve, to accept the action, annexation report for DD seven, Sub Three. Any other discussion? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Oh, nay? Motion carried. You can hear Rick?
Um, yeah, oh, one fourth.
We set a hearing date, do we?
This, this is the hearing date for this, isn't it? I mean, wasn't that set that way?
That's what I thought.
Yeah. It's been long enough now. I mean, it's a good question because it's, it's been a while, and there's usually people here for these things, but.
Can you get numbers on the reclass? Already prepared?
Yes, mhm, yep.
That'll be.
I could give it to you for you to look at. I haven't taken action yet, but. This is a small area. Got everything on one sheet, and what I did here is you'll see dollar amounts, and what I did is I, I spread the amount that it was, it was going to take for the classification over the new classification. So you can see what people would pay, anticipating that this will cost, what do I have down here, three thousand dollars or hopefully a little less. And then this shows what the resulting levy would be on people to pay for that, so. Going through the numbers, the high numbers, like two-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars, two-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars, and that happens to be some of the Davis property. Cost per acre. Since this is so small, we, if it's a big district and all ag, we can get it done for less than three dollars an acre, but this is pretty small, and just economy of scale makes it so that work out to six, but just over six-and-a-half dollars an acre to get it classified.
Yeah, you're working four-hundred-and-sixty acres.
Yeah, not very much, so. Again, I don't, you're representing the landowners for this one either, but I'm glad to answer anything we can.
Four-hundred-and-sixty acres for three, for three thousand dollars.
Yeah, yep, six dollars and fifty-two cents an acre average cost for the reclass.
I wonder, yeah, I'd say it's a little higher, but I just thought with the less acres, I mean, what's really making it cost that? I mean, why is it higher on it just because?
You just, you need to verify laterals.
You do the same type of work on a larger project, smaller, but your economic scale is that one here?
Yeah, because you're just, if you're setting and you're working out the soils, you download the soils map in the same length of time.
So if you had four-hundred acres or two-thousand acres, you'd do the same procedure, and we just.
And I'd have to look at, this probably includes the annexation also, so.
Well, that's.
This was, what I had, my manager give me was.
That could be annexation.
Yes, yes, yes. I had her give me the cost we had in it, and then I added some.
Part of that thirty thousand, huh?
Yes, yeah, part of the three thousand.
Three thousand.
For three thousand.
Yeah, it's just three thousand total.
Yeah, so it's got.
Yeah, three thousand total dollars.
Okay.
And I, that's after I added some.
This is the southwest corner, right, of Section One, of Davis, probably.
Uh, let me.
We're just looking at it on the playbook here.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's what it was.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was in here.
Yeah, it's not, it's in the, it's in the east half of that.
Yeah, it's in the very east part of it. North of the Bradgate Blacktop. The east-west kind of double line there, that's the Bradgate Blacktop. So it's just north of that, and on the east edge. And it wasn't in the original boundary of that sub-district, but by tiling it and taking it, yeah, brought it into it, so.
Rick, we got a question.
Oh.
I'm not in this district. I just want clarification. Did the people ask to be annexed into this project then?
They, I don't remember if there's actually a petition signed, or it was just brought to the attention of the board that there'd been tiling done and brought in.
Brought in.
The landlord did provide us the tile map, and I think it was during some other discussion.
Yeah, I think he did.
But basically, the cost of this whole project, it was because of this land being added into it, right?
And it, they included several other parcels of all being annexed while we were doing it, so, but yes, they might, they probably would have waited until something happened on the project if this hadn't been brought forward, so, yep.
Clarification?
Yeah.
Other discussion on the annexation, reclassification area, DD seven? We're never ahead of schedule, but I think nobody's here.
Nobody's here from the party. I think we're okay.
We have a motion to approve the reclassification.
If you want to. We can do it.
We can do it?
Yeah.
Fifteen minutes early, wasn't it, for nine-thirty?
But nobody was here for the first part, and so I'm assuming we're probably.
Paul, make a motion.
Want Fred Bruce?
I'll second. If somebody does come here, we can.
You want to hear them.
Yeah, exactly.
Unless it's eleven-thirty?
Okay, all those in favor of the annexation report, say aye?
All right, reclassification.
Those votes, nay? All those, okay, most of them asked. I think we better vote for ten of all.
Yes, there, I'm, there'll be some people here for that one, I'm sure, for DD six.
Let's say for recess, ten of all.
And I'll give you, I'll give you a report.
Can we do a close session?
I.
Or not? Go out of drainage, what?
Aye, 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 aye.
That was a big aye.
You need to weigh this one, for me.
Okay.
Because.
Doug's going to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye, aye, aye.
Well, we got forty-five minutes. I mean, we could handle the other one probably. We probably need to call Paul back. That's the other one, right?
Uh, no.
Yeah, that would.
Fifteen minutes, be enough.
Well, we got forty-five minutes. We have to wait till ten.
Oh, we got, oh, we all wait, I was waiting at nine-thirty. That's a long time.
That's a much longer.
That is a long time.
Should I call Paul back?
Yeah.
We gotta sign those papers first.
We got forty-five minutes.
We, we ought to sign, no, that just, we haven't, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So we have a copy of the reset?
Yes.
DD seven?
I think it's all down there.
Oh, yeah.
I'll get on.
There's three fourths.
You can hear motion.
I'll make a motion. Go out of drainage.
Aye, aye. I'll do the aye, aye.
All those favors going out of drainage.
All right.
Did you want one?